Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the September 26, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Kern County Planning Commission and call that meeting into order. Madam Clark, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ashley?
Here.
Commissioner Judge?
Here.
Commissioner McGiffney?
Here.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Commissioner Sprague?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Simon?
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on our agenda is Commission Member Announcement or Reports. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes from the September 20, September 12, 2019 meeting.
There are no comments, I would make a motion to approve.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, motion carries. Our next item is Cases With Drawn or Request for Continuance. Mr. Murphy, will you cover that for us, please?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Commissioners. We have one case this evening that has been, well, a refer back to staff is the recommendation. This is Conditioned Use Permit Number 46, MAP Number 10219. This is the Sunrise Community Center. Again, the staff recommendation is to refer this project back to staff just for the purposes of the record. The reason for that referral back to staff is that the design changed and it is staff's intent to re-advertise this request with the new design and then bring it back to your commission. So, we're anticipating trying to bring that back on the 14th of November, but again, for any residents that may be following this, new notices will be sent out after action of your commission tonight and it will duly note when the requests with the revised site plan will be brought back before your commission. That completes the reading of the Cases With Drawn or Request for Continuance.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no comments, I would prepare to make a motion.
Fantastic. We have a motion.
I will say that motion.
A motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Four eyes, one absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item up on the agenda is Consent, our Consent Calendar. Mr. Murphy, would you please cover that one for us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These are items scheduled before your commission which are being recommended for approval by staff and the applicant has been informed of any special conditions and has no objection. The hearing on these items may be expedited if no member of the commission or audience wishes to comment or ask any questions on the case. This evening, we have one case on the Consent Calendar. That is Conditioned Use Permit Number 18, MAP Number 9. Our applicant is Fernando and Elvia Zamora. This project is located at 10257 Casey Avenue in Delano. The request before your commission is a Conditioned Use Permit to allow a manufactured home that does not meet the age requirements in a PL, RS, MH District. The staff recommendation is to approve the Conditioned Use Permit in accordance with the recommended conditions and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution. That completes the reading of the Consent Calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. If there are no questions or comments, would entertain a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the site yesterday and after reading the staff report, I'm fully supportive of moving forward with it, so I would make a motion to approve if there are no other comments from Commissioners or the audience.
Additional comments? I will make a second motion.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Four eyes, one absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, would you please read the right of appeal on this one?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This project is final by your commission unless appealed, so it is subject to an appeal. For projects where that is the case, those actions are subject to appeal to the Board of Supervisors by any interested person and no development proposed by any application may be authorized until after the final date of appeal. An appeal may be filed with the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department located at 2700 M Street, Suite 100 in Bakersfield with a filing fee of $540 on forms available at the department. The filing must be made within 14 days of and including the date of this hearing. If no appeal is received, the action of the Planning Commission is final.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. So, the next item on our agenda is Public Presentations. This portion of the agenda is reserved for persons desiring to address the commission for topics that we have any jurisdiction over that are not on tonight's agenda. Are there any people who would like to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on over to the, to the public hearings portion and we will start with case number three. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Case number three, the request before your commission this evening is a Conditioned Use Permit that would authorize the construction of a 67-foot-tall water tank, wire-laced facility, and an associated equipment shelter in an E2-and-one-half RS District. The applicant for the project is Verizon Wireless by Complete Wireless Consulting, which is being represented by Mr. Matt Moore this evening. The project includes a Conditioned Use Permit, again, that would permit a 67-foot-tall water tank wireless communication facility with an approximately 900-square-foot lease area that would include an equipment shelter and a backup generator. As proposed, the project will be enclosed with a six-foot-high chain-link fence that is surrounded by a dedicated five-foot-wide landscape easement with separate irrigation. The project site itself is located within the Bakersfield area at 10314 Brimhall Road, which is approximately 600 feet east of Verdugo Lane within a 2.44-acre parcel. The parent parcel is developed with a dwelling unit, a detached living area, and accessory structures, and as can be seen on this aerial, the proposed tower is located in the rear of the property. If Ms. Montzabias can point out the tower? I meant point out the tower on the aerial, so they know exactly where it is on the property. Thank you. All right. The project site itself is designated SR by the Metropolitan Bakersfield General Plan and again, has a zone classification of E2-and-one-half RS. According to the E or Estate Zone District requirements, any radio, television antenna, communication tower, chimney, and/or any other similar structure shall not exceed a height of 80 feet. Again, the project before your commission is requesting a 67-foot-tall tower, which is in compliance with the adopted zoning ordinance. Surrounding properties to the north, east, and west are developed with larger lot, single-family residences within the county jurisdiction. Properties directly south are smaller lot and are located within the city of Bakersfield jurisdiction. Access to the site itself is from Brimhall Road. The tower will be accessed via a proposed private access east of the existing house and per Condition 5A1, a paved road approach will be required per the recommendation of the Kern County Public Works Department. Staff notes that we have received or processed six similar requests that have been approved within the county, within the project vicinity, which all those requests have been detailed for your commission on pages two and three of your staff report. And then, we did get word from the neighbors that a tower has also been approved within the city of Bakersfield jurisdiction located approximately one-half mile southeast of the project site. As a reminder for your commission, wireless communication facilities are permitted uses within all industrial zones, however they require the processing of a Conditioned Use Permit in an agricultural, residential, or any commercial district. Stealthing of a tower is required if the project is zoned residential or has a residential general plan designation or is located on property within 300 feet of any residentially zoned land. All proposed towers must not only comply with the base zone district it is located in, but must also be compliant with the Wireless Communication Facilities Chapter of the Kern County Zoning Ordinance, known as Chapter 19.91. The purpose of this chapter specifically is to establish the reasonable guidelines and regulations for the siting of a wireless communication facility providing non-broadcast services that are subject to the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996. The siting of the wireless communication facility shall be encouraged to minimize the adverse aesthetic impacts of residential areas and other sensitive view sheds by co-locating the facility wherein that is feasible and then, when located near residential development, utilizing stealthing design technologies by designing the facility so that it is not easily recognizable as a telecommunications tower. The purpose of requiring a stealth design is to harmonize the proposed facility with the surrounding natural or built environment. While Chapter 19.99, sorry, 19.91 of the zoning ordinance is the manner by which Kern County manages communication facilities locally, your commission should be advised that these facilities are also federally regulated in accordance with the Telecommunications Act of 1996. The purpose of the Telecommunications Act and specifically Section 704 is to foster the growth of cellular and communication technologies and in doing so, the federal government has limited siting provisions in terms of local land use authority when they meet basic development provisions or standards. Quoting directly from Section 704(a) of the Act, "The regulation of the placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless service facilities by any state or local government or instrumentally thereof shall not unreasonably discriminate among providers of functionality equivalent services and shall not prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless services." The Act also further expressly preempts state and local governments from regulating personal wireless communication facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions to the extent that such facilities comply with FCC regulations concerning those emissions. There have been court rulings that a zoning board's denial of a permit for a provider because two cellular providers are already providing service in the same area constituted unreasonable discrimination and under the Telecommunications Act, a municipality may not simply decide that it already has enough towers on that basis and therefore deny the application. To address stealth design requirements, the proposed wireless facility resembles a water tank, which is consistent with the requirements of the Kern County Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 19.991, sorry, 19.91. The water tank stealth design was chosen by the applicant over a tree design or a mono-palm design because it complements the permitted domestic agricultural uses within the residential areas that are characterized by estate residential with the suburban combining district. During the course of processing the request, staff notified all the surrounding property owners and county departments. As of this writing, we have received six comment letters by public agencies and we have received three comment letters and a petition signed by 35 individuals that are opposed to the proposed request. Your commission has been provided an addendum staff report this evening that includes all of the comment letters that we have received after the original staff report has been released for public review. During the course of this review, a number of concerns were raised by interested persons that are listed in the petition headed by Val Segarkinsky, along with conversations with Catherine Popwell and additional comment letters from Olga C. and Mark Popwell. Right now, I'd like to take a few minutes to highlight those concerns along with how they've been addressed by staff. Again, staff did receive comments from the area residents expressing a concern related to the exposure from radio emissions. Again, in response to that comment, I would note that, as I previously mentioned, the Telecommunications Act specifically states that local government may not deny a request to constitute a facility on the grounds that it has radio frequency emissions that would be harmful to the environment or the health of residents if those emissions meet FCC standards. Condition 6E, which is found on page five of your draft resolution, has been included for this project and it reads, "The property owner shall continuously comply with the following conditions of approval during implementation of this permit. The communications facility shall be constructed and operated in accordance with all requirements of the Federal Communications Commission." Regarding concerns related to aesthetic impacts, it is important to note that there is not any existing or proposed air or view shed easement that exists on the project site, nor is the tower proposed to be located within the boundaries of any identified scenic vista. The project is not located in an isolated area of land that is void of any structures or environmental landscape characteristics. Rather, the tower is proposed within an open area of a developed parcel that is zoned estate residential suburban combining. Again, the purpose of this district is to designate areas suitable for larger lot residential living environments. The inclusion of the RS District serves to expand the total number and type of permitted domestic agricultural uses within this rural residential area. Wireless communication facilities are permitted use in this district when approved with the CUP and the stealth design of the water tower for the proposed facility is consistent with the E2-and-one-half RS District as accessory structures such as a barn, corrals, chicken coops, water towers are all appropriate uses for this domestic agricultural area. While the base of the facility will not be very visible from the public based on the proposed location in the rear of the development parcel, staff is still including Condition 4B, which begins on page three of the attached resolution, requiring that the facility be landscaped. Conditions 5D and E, beginning on page four of the attached resolution, specify that prior to activation of the wireless communication facility, the following conditions shall be verified by the building inspector and shall be continuously maintained while the permit is active. All equipment shelters, poles, antennas, and supporting structures shall be treated with gray, non-reflective colors and the water tower shall be painted in a gray, non-reflective color. Regarding the potential loss of property value to adjacent development, staff does consider this comment speculative at this time. A number of factors impact property values, including developed infrastructure adjacent to the facility, overall housing supply in the area, location. Further, the ability to house animals also impacts property value and the surrounding land uses. At this time, before your commission, staff does not believe that a fair argument can be made based on the information in the record to support the conclusion that implementation of the project as conditioned by staff would result in any physical impacts to the adjacent properties or a dramatic loss in property value to the surrounding properties. Regarding a gap coverage, staff has received the information, including the supplemental maps from Verizon Wireless, showing the anticipated coverage area that will result with this project if it is implemented. The information we have received is similar to information that we have received on cellular towers and is consistent with our submitted requirements for these proposed facilities. As I previously mentioned, staff has to evaluate this information and the coverage maps on a provider-by-provision basis. Just because they may be serviced in an area by one company does not mean that this is a basis for denying the application. Overall, staff is recommending approval of this project by your commission. The use of the water tower, we believe, is consistent with the rural nature of the surrounding land uses. Staff believes that the location of the tower on the identified project site is consistent with the department's setback requirements and would not directly impede the development or any use of any adjacent parcels. Staff has included all of the required findings necessary for your commission to approve the project and the proposed development has been adequately conditioned to ensure the public health and safety impacts are addressed. Before I conclude my remarks, I would like to revise one condition at this time. Condition 5E requires that the proposed tower be painted in a gray, non-reflective color. I would like to include the phrase and shall not include any signage or visible lettering on the tower. The purpose of adding that language to the condition is just to ensure that at no point the tower will ever be used for purposes of signage or any message displaying. Again, overall, it is the department's recommendation that your commission approve the Conditioned Use Permit in accordance with recommended conditions, including the revisions to Condition 5E, as I have read into the record today, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution. This completes my comments and I'm available to answer any questions your commission may have.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
I have questions for Mr. Murphy.
Commissioner Sprague?
Mr. Murphy, do you know how many unit pads are planned for this tower? What's the maximum amount they could put on the tower or the tank?
Commissioner Sprague, I believe through the chair, that's probably best answered by the project applicant as it could vary based on the overall design and siting.
I'll ask him when it comes up.
We have included a condition that the facility itself should be designed in such a manner to allow co-location when possible. So, it is our intent that the facility be designed so that in the future, if there is another provider that would like to service in this area, that it can be co-located on the facility to the extent possible.
What's the, do you know the term of the lease?
I do not. Those are site-specific negotiations between the project developer and the property owner.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Would the project proponent like to speak? Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Matthew Moore. That's M-O-O-R-E. I am an authorized agent of Verizon Wireless and the project manager for our Akmore Way project here. I'd like to thank staff for their presentation. It was fantastic. So, rather than reiterate what they said, I'd just kind of like to fill everybody in on a little bit of the process here, the behind-the-scenes stuff and kind of how we got to where we are today. So, first of all, I work for what's called a site acquisition company. When carriers need, determine that they need a tower in a certain area, what they'll do is they will issue search rings to companies like mine that say, "We need a tower somewhere within this geographic location to either A, fill a gap in coverage, B, address capacity issues with surrounding sites, or both." Companies like mine will then take that ring and we start the investigative process. It starts with local zoning codes and regulations. We have to see if we're even allowed to investigate certain parcels. Once we've whittled it down that way, we will reach out to interested, or to all landlords on any available parcels within the ring and we'll see what we get back in terms of interest from there. We'll meet with the landlords. We'll send somebody out to look at the site and make sure it's constructable. We can run utilities. We don't need to build, do excessive grading or any kind of excessive roadwork or things like that. And finally, and most importantly, it has to work from the network perspective. It has to work for the radio frequency engineers. In this particular instance, the searching for this site was issued in October of 2012, so it has been a long and slow process of going back and forth with certain landlords, getting very far into the process only to find something that pulls us out and we have to start from scratch again. We have been aware of the existing tower roughly a half-mile to the southeast for quite some time. There were, there was some documentation submitted from the radio frequency engineers in the addendum that kind of addresses the inability to co-locate on that tower. The simple fact of the matter is, the need for this facility is very location-specific because it is in the center of four other facilities that are all struggling and it's the, what's basically happening here is that because the surrounding facilities are struggling with user traffic and there's no point in the middle of the area that we're looking at, there's no data passing through this area. It's all being absorbed at those very specific locations because of the way that the towers work. They are going to prioritize users that are closer to the tower because they're going to have the strongest signal in connection to the tower. And so, this is effectively a dead spot in terms of data, which is the vast majority of what the cellphones are used for these days. So, again, it's been a long, seven-year process. We have spoken with at least 25 different landlords to try to get something going. If we could co-locate on the existing facility and take the path of least resistance here, we absolutely would do that. We just simply can't. So, with that being the case, we are up to all zoning provisions. We can build the thing. Our landlord supports it and there is a demonstrable need for the facility in this location.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Commissioner Sprague had a couple of questions. I'll have him repeat those and see if he can answer them for us.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a count of the maximum amount of pad units that will be transmitting from the tower?
I know that we designed them to be co-locatable for at least one additional carrier and so, what they're going to be looking for probably is similar to what we have, nine antennas on the tower and ground equipment. Beyond that, I'm not sure what else would be able to fit. It would be very dependent on what the specific carrier was trying to do, which, you know, azimuths or directions they needed to face their antennas and things like that.
So, would the pads be compatible with the gray color on the tank so that they don't just stand out?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay. And then, can you tell us what the term of the lease is on this? And then can you tell us what the term of the lease is on this?
That I'm not sure. I don't work directly with the landlords in these instances. I'm the zoning guy.
Can you tell us what the exit program would be in the event that the tower didn't work out or is not needed anymore in the future? We're not, we don't know what the lease term is, so I'm looking for an exit program to demolish and take it out. Is that part of your proposal here with the landowner in the lease contract in order to exit the property and leave it back in its original state?
Yes, sir. We would restore it back to its original state.
And is that in your lease contract also?
I believe so, yes.
You believe so, but do you know?
Yes, sir. I do not know, but it's, it's a fairly standard provision. I haven't read this lease directly, again, because that's not my position here, but it is a pretty standard term.
Let me pull over to Mr. Murphy again. Mr. Murphy, can we throw a language in there about if the facility is no longer being used or needed? In, in the terms with the lease, we can't bother that, but with conditions, can we put conditions in there so that we have a proper exit program for the facilities and returning it back to its natural state in the event they decide to terminate? We don't know what the term is, so it's hard to put that in writing. I understand that, but it's a, it's a question that I'm starting to ask a lot about because of all the cell towers around. And when they're done with them, I've talked to some of the cell tower people, they don't have an exit program. And, you know, it's like when you have a requirement for vegetation and water, they don't have requirements in our material that says there should be a water meter there for water source, proper, you know, water conservation drip lines and things like that. I'm just trying to cover all the bases here for the community and the neighborhood that's there.
Commissioner Sprague through the chair. Would it be within your purview to add such a condition? Yes, I believe that you could. I do not believe that I have had that condition incorporated on any of our previous facilities. I'm not sure, but I don't believe that I've had that. I guess the only part of the comment that I would note is that I'm not aware of outstanding issues where services are no longer being utilized and we have a whole bunch of unutilized towers. You know, as service continues to be in demand, I believe that whether it be Verizon, a different carrier could potentially use that same tower. And so I do not believe that there is an identified need at this time, like we do when we have other projects where we incorporate decommissioning. That's just not one that we have been incorporated or including.
The reason I ask the question is because with all the high-tech stuff that we're coming up with, it seems like year by year, things are moving towards satellite transmission, things like that. And at that point, they may not have a use for some of these cell towers in these radius areas. And that would leave an eyesore for the neighborhood if, if they converted from the tower to the satellite or some other type of transmission facility. So I'm trying to come up with something that works for the neighborhood and works for the, the lessee.
If I may, I have seen conditions in the past where they just stipulate if the approved use or ceases to be used for the approved use for a period of six months or something to that effect, then removal and restoration is required.
Back to original.
Sure. So, I mean, we would definitely be amenable if.
Okay. All right. That covers what I had to say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Sprague. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
I would like to add one. I did notice that a lot of the public comment touched on health and safety concerns. And while it's not something that can necessarily be considered, we don't want to just use that as a hammer. So we do have a subject matter expert here tonight that can answer any specific questions in that regard.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there others that would like to comment on this particular project? Please step forward. State your name. I'll ask you to limit your comments to two minutes, if you don't mind.
Okay. My name is Mart Popplewell. That's M-A-R-T-P-O-P-P-L-E-W-E-L-L. I'm the property owner of 10380 Brim Hall Road. I've owned the property for 15 years and my intention is to retire there. And this is something that has come up. We've gotten those cards in the mail and they try to promise us all these things. Why do they, I have some questions. Why do they only target landlords? Is it that homeowners don't want to have this in their backyard? I'm opposed to this project. May I ask a couple of questions about what was, okay. First of all, a stealth design was mentioned. What does a stealth design look like?
Mr. Murphy, will you cover that for us, please?
I will, Mr. Chairman. If Ms. Montzabias, if you could put the image of what the facility will look like. So as opposed to a tower that is just a lattice tower that has the satellite dishes or whatever would be on it, this facility will actually be designed to look like a water tower. So actually, it will be all the, I'm calling them dishes, the plates, the frequencies will all be actually covered by a round circular tower so that just by looking at the, just by looking at it, you would actually think that it's a water tower as opposed to a communications facility. Some other designs that people utilize are a pine tree where it's kind of looks like a pine tree or a mono palm. But in this particular case, having the tree that would stand alone, the applicant felt it looked more out of place than putting a tower given the surrounding communities.
Sure. I wanted to ask, it was mentioned in your statement, it says, you said this complements this ag region. How do you see that as a compliment?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer a few. So the property is designated, that it's on in the surrounding areas are designated estate, two and a half residential suburban. So those areas are typically designed and maintained in rural lifestyle living. Barns, corrals, you're allowed to have expanded horse use and other animals within these properties. And a water tower is not a typical type of facility that someone would, you would find out of characteristic in properties that meet these standards as opposed to a 6,000-square-foot lot residential community. So it fits with the natural characteristics of the surrounding land uses.
But you also realize that just to the south of this, on the south side of Brim Hall, is city. And I walked this last night and I talked to many people that either didn't know or weren't unaware, and they're not pleased about this. But also, you mentioned something about housing density. There is no way that I can do anything with my property increasing the housing density there. And I wasn't sure quite what you meant by that. But since I'm limited for time, I'm going to have to hurry up here. So my complaint is, we are all opposed to it. There's a few of us here tonight. My wife couldn't be here tonight. We have agriculture, animals, and we have animals at the fair tonight. So I had to take away my time from my family here to come and try to defend my property here. I bought this 15 years ago and I never intended we would have this kind of issues come in. My complaint is property value is going to drop. It's a known fact. Talk to any real estate agent. Anytime you have a property listed, anybody that's going to find out, they'll find out. Properties have dropped in value. Any sort of situation that draws from the property will devalue the properties. There are known cancer issues. I have a lot of information here that I'm not going to go into, but I'll be happy to answer questions about. That there are known health issues with this situation. It's going to devalue my property. It's going to make my property, if I decide to rent it back out again, to re-rent it because of full disclosure as a landlord, I've been for 30 years in this town, that we have to disclose these things, as do all the people on the south side of Brim Hall in the city. Because anything that can see that tower, the appraiser is going to find it and they have to call it out. And a good example is they depreciate these properties because it's an eyesore, it's a drawback. And I'm kind of shocked that we even have to do this, but I get it. I'm going to ask, I've got a few more things to cut. I'm going to request a continuance so we can have some more time to review this. We got a letter arrived on a Saturday, like the sixth or seventh, and we had to respond within two or three days. And we barely got acquainted and got together as homeowners. We complained about the short notice. We complained about the location. It is within a mile of a high school district. I'm an employee of the current high school district. I am an IT guy. I am a Verizon customer and we have no problems with any cell service or any data service in that area. So wherever that came from, that's false. So my complaints are health concerns, visual annoyance, property values. And if that's the case, then are you going to lower my property taxes since I've had now something come in to my area that's going to detriment, is a detriment to the area? Just want to know. And I'd like to know how much the homeowner, the landlord who does not live on the property, so he doesn't, he's not subject to any of the conditions of this, how much is he getting compensated for that?
Not our jurisdiction, frankly.
Right. But it's $3,000 to $5,000 a month. So I'm asking, and I think my other folks are with me, I'm asking for a continuance to give us more time to evaluate this situation. And within less than a mile of a school district, I'm only maybe, maybe a couple hundred feet. I'm the neighbor two doors down from this and it will negatively impact me. I bought this property 15 years ago from the original owner, I might add. These houses don't sell in turnover very often. And we're disappointed that we can't maybe have a little bit more time to present a better case and maybe get a little bit more prepared. That's pretty much what I have. And I don't mean to go on, but that's.
Thank you.
Just a digest version of what I've got. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Popplewell.
I'm Val Seager-Kansky. I'm a mechanical engineer.
Would you, would you please spell your last name for the record, please? Thank you, sir.
I'm a general engineering contractor. I don't believe that asking for continuance is going to help anything in this situation. Most of my neighbors that I've talked to got offers to, to do this. Myself and all my neighbors refused. One neighbor that doesn't live there, he's using it as a rental. He took for the money. Okay? Now, this neighborhood, most people are retirement age. Some with parents, others with kids and grandkids. They all have horses, farm animals, and whatever. This 5G will affect everybody. When you start looking up to 5G, you see a little bit that the cell company said that it doesn't affect anybody. But it does. I just got a put a, what do you call it, pacemaker. And they told me, "Don't put your phone next to your pacemaker." And a cellphone is really zero compared to that. Okay? I believe that for the neighborhood, all these towers are going to affect the young, the old, everybody that lives there, all their pets and livestock and cats. And with some animals, they go crazy with this stuff. It's, it's hard to say what actually is going to happen. Okay? Now, the other thing, the construction, it looks great. It's a sore subject. It looks bad, but it's, I mean, it was proposed well. You have a lot of bridges that come tumbling down when the earthquake hits. Is this sized for that or is it going to come down? I just hope you consider the people that bought the properties. Those properties are not only a piece of property to live on as the retirement package and we don't want to lose any of that. Okay?
My name is Timothy Johnson. I live at 10031 Schellerbarger Road. Nobody wants to talk about the elephant in the room. They'd say, "Well, it's just a water tower." Well, it's not the sight that may be unsightly. It's what you don't see. You can, you can go and grab a T-Mobile report or a Verizon report and they will give you their safety span that this is safe. Yet there are other independent studies that show that there's a problem. The assumption that is made because of the FCC ruling of 1996 is that our mayors, our city council members are excused from a potential liability claim if one happens. It's a false assumption and it's possible that each one of you will be subject to a lawsuit if it comes down to it. Now, that's just, we don't need to spend any more taxpayers' money to approve something that we already have the technology. 10 years ago, the optic fiber network was proposed, which is far superior than any wireless technology. I get, I get cell service at my house. I don't need, I don't need another thing that I can't shut off that's running 24/7. Back in March this year, I was, I had a cancer scare again. I do everything I can from diet change to everything to, I don't even like my cellphone on me. It's not even on me right now. I do things that I can individually to limit exposure. I can't stop that if it goes in. It's on 24/7. Would you want to, would you feel comfortable putting a tent under there yourself? Because I know Val's property, it's just close, it's actually closer, his house is closer and his stuff is closer than it is from the far, from the front of the house. I mean, there's, there's a, there's a house, the rental house, and they've got animals back there. And goodness, I, I just feel sorry for them. But I did, I walked that whole street and the people, every person that I could talk to did not want this in their backyard. I got the letter. I could have had it put in my backyard. I don't want it. There are other ways to handle a data, a data supply and that's, this isn't the way we need to go. The electrical smog, the EMFs that are produced by these things is something we all need to be concerned about because one of these days it's going to come and bite us.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Are there others who would like to speak? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion.
Chairman, prior to closing, I'd make a comment. I know that there's been a lot of communication about health risk and we understand the concerns of the community. It's always important to appreciate coming out and weighing your concerns to us. I know the applicant mentioned there was someone here that has specialty that could comment on these items. I'd like to be able to hear from them and maybe hopefully could make a point on some of the comments made by the public.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Raj Mathur, M-A-T-H-U-R. I'm with the firm of Hammett and Edison. We are an independent consulting engineering. We are an independent consulting engineering firm located up in Sonoma, and I am a licensed professional electrical engineer in the state of California. Our job as engineers is to evaluate sites like these for radio frequency exposure, or RF exposure, compliance with the FCC standard. We've completed that evaluation for this site. We find that it will comply with the FCC limits. The maximum calculated RF exposure level anywhere ground, or at any of the nearby buildings, is 7.4% of the FCC limit. What that means is that the maximum level is 13 times below the limit. There are two main reasons why the levels are so low. And the first is that the antennas are directional. The energy from the antenna is in a narrow beam going out towards the horizon, 60 feet up in the air. So it's above where all the people are. And the second reason is that the energy from the antenna falls with the square of the distance. What this means is that when you go twice as far away, the energy falls by the square of two, or four times. When you go 10 times far away, the energy falls by the square of 10, or 100 times. So there's an exponential drop in radio frequency energy with distance. A couple of other things I'll add regarding the comments here today. First, this is a 4G facility. It is not a 5G facility. And there were some questions about the FCC standard. The standards across the developed world are fairly similar. So some examples, Canada, Australia, France, UK, the European Union as a whole, their RF exposure standards are extremely similar to the FCC standard. In addition, there are several independent standards, not associated with any country or government, and they're also extremely similar to the FCC standard. And the reason that all these standards are so similar is that we're all looking at the same set of studies, and there's thousands of studies on radio frequency exposure, and after applying an appropriate safety factor, everybody's reaching essentially the same conclusion of what the safe level should be. And again, this proposed facility is about 13 times below that FCC limit. And the last thing, the gentleman mentioned a pacemaker, and keeping the phone away from it. Pacemakers are designed so that they are not affected by radio frequency interference, at least up to the FCC limit. So as long as you're below the FCC limit, there will be no interference to pacemakers. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you for that. I do have a question, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask Mr. Raj here. So one thing as well, when it comes to radiation, you know, people are always concerned, things like radiation from X-rays, I think that could affect the actual dynamic makeup of the DNA cell. Can you help me, if you have knowledge on this, the difference between non-ionizing, non-ionizing radiation compared to ionizing radiation? And I believe cell towers come under non-ionizing radiation, is that correct?
That's correct. Cell towers are non-ionizing radiation. In fact, all terrestrial communication in non-ion, is non-ionizing. So, you know, these are all radio frequencies, your police, your sheriff, fire, TV, FM, AM, all of this is non-ionizing. All terrestrial communication are non-ionizing. X-rays, gamma rays, UV are ionizing. And what the distinction is, the dividing line between ionizing and non-ionizing is visible light. So frequencies that are higher than visible light are ionizing. And what ionizing means is that the frequency is so high that it's able to knock the electrons out of the atoms. And that's how it changes the molecular structure, and that's the scientific mechanism by which ionizing frequencies cause cancer. Non-ionizing frequencies, no matter how much power you put into them, they cannot knock the electrons out of the atom, because their frequencies are lower than visible light. And so there is no proven scientific mechanism so far, which would indicate how, even how theoretically, non-ionizing frequencies would cause cancer. Hopefully that answers your question.
That, and thank you, as long as I clarify, I understand that, and also for the public notification. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Mathur. Any further comments from our commission?
Mr. Chairman, can I answer a few questions real quick?
Absolutely.
Based on some of the comments that were
Absolutely.
mentioned earlier from Mr. Sprague. The first, I'd just like to note, as your commission considers this project regarding the water tower itself, the property right now, someone could build a 35-foot-tall water tower without any discretionary actions by the planning commission, by the Kern County Board of Supervisors. That could be built tomorrow with a building permit. So just for comparisons in terms of, could a tower, a water tower be built on that site? Yes, it could, as an accessory structure to the facility at 35 feet. Regarding the abandonment provision that you had mentioned, Mr. Sprague, you got me thinking, why haven't I ever seen this on one of the conditions before? The answer is because it's already incorporated into our zoning ordinance. So the applicant is subject to Chapter 19.91, which I mentioned, and I'd like to read for the record, Section 19.91040, abandonment, which the project would already be subject to if this is authorized. Any wireless telecommunications facility not in operation for a consecutive period of 12 months shall be deemed abandoned and shall be removed within 60 days from the date written notice to the owner of the facility has been sent by the county. If the owner of the wireless communications facility does not remove the structure identified in said notice within 60 days, the property owner shall be served with written notice to remove the identified structure within 60 days. If the property owner does not remove the structure within this 60-day period, the county may remove the structure at the property owner's expense and lien the property to recover all enforcement and removal costs. So that provision, Mr. Commissioner Sprague, is already incorporated into the standards by which the facility must be operating.
Thank you for that.
Regarding the question related to earthquake potential, I just wanted to note that this project will require issuance of a building permit, so it will go through the standards, through the county public works department, to ensure that it is built and structured in such a manner as required with all facilities within the county of Kern. Again, I just also like to note that any land use issue is very important to all residents that live in the area. I do appreciate the commenters that have come and participated in this process. I believe their comments were very well-written and provided to staff. And again, I do appreciate their, their participation in this process. I would note that the only other question that was about a continuance, in addition to all these other regulations that we must review when we come to these projects, there is a shot clock, in which we must approve or deny a project, and if we don't meet that shot clock, the developer could potentially actually build it anyway. That is a 90-day shot clock by which this process must be processed once it's deemed complete. As of today, we're at day 60. So I just wanted to let you know that we are through a majority of that process as well. And again, ultimately, the department believes that the facility has been designed in such a manner to the provisions that were allowed legally to, to regulate these facilities, and we do believe it is consistent with the surrounding property owners from an aesthetic perspective. So I'd just like to provide those comments.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. No further questions or comments? I agree, I appreciate residents coming out, voicing their opinion about this. It's not about, as the project proponents had, it's not a 5G tower, it's a 4G tower. I think that what's presented in the package here, to me, talks about congestion of those other towers. And so anybody who's been to a concert, or a sporting event, where every single person in the stadium or the venue is using their phone at the same time, your phone doesn't work anymore. And so from what I'm hearing, we're kind of seeing that in this neighborhood. We have a hole that, that will ultimately, could ultimately be a safety situation for you in a way that you don't expect, and that is, you pick up your cellphone to make it work, and it doesn't, because the bandwidth has been reached on those towers. So I would entertain a motion on this particular project, if the commission is ready.
Are there other questions, or?
No, I just wanted to add one more comment before a motion is made as well. Commissioner, thank you, Chair, for mentioning that. And I also want to commend all the local community coming out, showing their support for what they believe and their concerns, and that's what this forum is for, is to discuss these type of situations, so we can have the community input. And I'd just like to clarify something that us as a commission have to focus on. You know, we are up here to regulate land use, and we look at this from many angles, but as Mr. Murphy commented on, this, this is an approved use for this type of zoning on this property. This property was zoned, this used for, I'm not sure how long, but it, coming to this application, it meets all requirements. And if, on the second end of that, we as a commission have to always be mindful that due to federal regulations, we kind of discriminate against carriers, and allow one carrier to have use, another not. And that's something that we have to, have no control of locally, but at the federal level, we have to abide by. So with that being said, I, I think that I would also entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, can I, I want to, I need to correct one thing, just before your commission takes your final action.
Please do.
I was corrected, and different types of facilities have different shot clocks. This particular facility, I actually believe, is 150-day shot clock. So we are still at day 60, but I just, because of your consideration, I want to make sure that the appropriate information was provided to your commission.
I do have one more question of our legal counsel. Phil, isn't it true that the commission cannot consider the property value decrease that was spoke about here tonight in our decisions to decline this or to approve it?
Commissioner, through the chair, not just this land use decision, but just about any land use decision, we've come across this, at some point in time, somebody's made a comment about land use values. And the problem with that is it's completely speculative. There's no real way of pinpointing that down. So it's just a matter, of course, we, we have not addressed those, because they're speculative, and we have no substantive evidence that we can use to determine how this might or may not affect a future buyer who may or may not exist.
The reason I'm bringing it up is because we hear it all the time. And I mean, I knew it existed, but it's a big concern for the neighborhood, I understand that. But we have to make decisions based on what we have in our package and scientific data that's here, which I've read and the other commissioners have absorbed also. So with that, I would go ahead and make a motion to approve the project as presented by staff and read into the record with any changes that have been spoken about in this public hearing.
I'd like to add motion.
We have a motion in a second.
Four i's, one absent, motion carries.
So this decision is final as per this commission, so Mr. Murphy, would you go ahead and talk about that right to appeal again, please?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For projects where the planning commission action is final, those actions are subject to appeal to the Board of Supervisors, and any interested person, and no development proposed by any application may be authorized until after the final date of appeal. An appeal may be filed with the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department, located at 2700 M Street, Suite 100 in Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $540 on forms that we have available at the department. The filing must be made within 14 days of and including the date of this hearing. If no appeal is received, the action of the planning commission is final.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. That brings us to the end of our agenda for this evening. Certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Meeting adjourned.